Good morning, everyone. Okay, good morning, everyone. Welcome to another meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Tuesday, September 30th. I am not Marquise Harris Dawson. I'm Nitya Ramen. And public comment will be taken in person in the council chamber only for today's meeting. Can we please have quiet in the chambers? Councilmember Price.
All right, I'm going to caution, Madam President. I'm accusing myself from item 10 because my wife's employer has worked with one of the organizations listed on in the past. I'm also accusing myself from item 45 because I'm a landlord.
Sorry, Mr. Price, was that items 10 and 45?
Correct.
Okay, great. Okay, Councilmember Hutt.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'd like to call Madam Clerk. Madam Chair, sorry.
Not the clerk.
Sorry. I'd like to call item 33, Special Foron Amendment. I believe that's being...
All the items on this agenda, like one and two, are just these clowns going through the motion and pretending they are doing something when they are only sitting there collecting their $25,000 per month salaries and creating even more homelessness by their incompetence. Item number one should be taken off the agenda because it does not solve any city problems. For example, it is a proposed adjustment to the sanitation department. How is this item number one by incompetent and corrupt Marquisie Dawson and the rest of the clowns going to solve the city's problems like the tens of thousands of homeless? Item number one should be taken off the agenda. It should receive a no vote if indicted embezzling criminal current price is allowed to vote. Indicted criminals out on bail and on trial for voting on his wife's business with the city should not be allowed to vote. Item two is just a worthless and it's for a liquor license. This item should be removed off the agenda of these incompetent clowns. These clowns have absolutely no idea how to increase the commerce and thereby the prosperity and jobs of the city. So they put alcohol licenses on the agenda. Marquisie Dawson is incompetent and corrupt. I formally protest this item being on the agenda with tens of thousands of homeless in the city and it's officially broke. I also formally protest the illegal September 26 meeting in Van Nuys and demand all items voted on to be immediately reversed. General public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute.
Okay, public, when you hire clowns, you get a circus. With all the massive city problems, this is how these clowns have run the city into the ground by just sitting there collecting their $20,000 to $30,000 per month salary. One billion dollar budget emergency by giving $1 billion increase to LAPD last year. Tens of thousands of homeless epidemic emergencies. 275,000 billion, 275 billion fire damage emergency. And Sleazy D and the rest of these clowns, they're giving stupid presentations with nothing on the agenda. No plan at all, nothing. The circus of incompetence is unbelievable. Sleazy Marquisie Dawson, CD8, has the highest incarceration rate, the highest homeless rate, the highest unemployment rate in the entire United States, over 12.5 percent. CD8 is a near complete food desert. Sleazy D has spent over $10 million on luxury offices. Okay, I'm done.
Good morning.
Sí, buenos días a todos. Mi nombre es Delmira González y quiero un intérprete en español, por favor.
Okay, and which items would you like to speak to?
Si, sobre cuáles temas quiere hablar?
De los aumentos de los utensilios que van a hacer en la ciudad.
I want to speak about the raise in utilities in the city.
No sé qué número es.
I don't know what number it is.
I believe it's number one. So you have one minute for item number one. Go ahead.
Un minuto.
Okay. Mi comentario es de que nosotros estamos aquí para hablar. Yo soy del proyecto pastoral y estoy aquí para hablar de este problema porque nosotros somos personas mayores y para que esté denes aumento en los utensilios.
Yes, I'm here to speak because I'm from Project Pastoral and us older people are struggling with the increases in prices.
Ah, no estamos de acuerdo porque somos personas mayores y ya recibemos el seguro social. Entonces es una tarifa que siempre están dando y pues es como poner una familia en la calle.
And we are not in agreement with it because as we are receiving social security, it's like this is an extra tariff. And honestly, we're just basically at risk of just being on out on the street.
Y nos, yo estoy aquí para decirles que analicen bien porque no queremos más familias en las calles porque ahorita tenemos demasiadas familias y todavía más. Entonces analicen bien este problema porque a muchas familias nos afectan. Gracias.
And I am telling you this, please analyze this problem well because we do not want any more families out on the streets. There are already plenty of families that are now homeless. So please analyze this well, do your job well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Attorney Smoking Scan. Let's start with item number 31. Item number 32,爱情不是随便许诺，好了，不想再说了，哟哟，let's go, homie. Now, let's move on to item number 33. Item number 33. Dana,你不知道。Dana, Dana,不知道。Dana,你不知道。Dana, Dana,不知道。Dana,你不知道。Dana, Dana,不知道。That's what makes you beautiful. Now, let's move on to general public comment. Yes, right now, I am aware that our city is in a budget crisis, city attorney. But however, we are $800 million in deficit, but you are continuing to purchasing special LA convention center project. Right now, we are losing so much money and our city attorney continue to offering special services for illegal criminals. And we are losing so much money and our city attorney continue to refuse, continue to lay off LA city worker, continue to firing people. And we are in a huge, huge budget deficit, but our crime has been skyrocketed and our city attorney still not doing anything. What's the solution for that? We can make sure that Mr. Spiller elected for the city one, including every single Smoking Scan member, elect Spiller, Council District One, 2026. Let's go, Spiller.
And before the next speaker comes up and begins, for people who are just tuning in, I see a lot of new faces. That you are not watching The Voice or America's Got Talent, people express themselves in many different ways. I promise you that it gets, it can get much worse than that. To the last speaker, just again, we'll make the offer. If you would like a foreign language interpreter, if you let us know roughly 48 hours in advance, we will do our best to get that for you. Mr. Herman, you are up. As discussed earlier, there's no reason for you to bring all of your items up. Do not disrupt or delay this meeting. You, this is your first and only formal warning. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Wow. Wow. No prior impermissible verdict here? Well, let's read into the verdict here, Smoking Scan. Why during our great Bureau of Sanitation people here, who should be given a raise effectively immediately as I speak? Because they got a lot of shit and trash to pick up in our streets. Right? And without the process of getting their ass to work, it does no good or justice in this system at a time when we're looking to cut off jobs, save the deficit, and create a budget that we can't control. So you decide what we do for the great men and women who pick up your shit and trash and bulky items, big head. Now, item number two, asshole. Bar license number 317217 for the record. I'm talking, hey, Korean boy, I'm talking. Now...
Got to stay on topic, Mr. Herman.
That's right, Sambo, I am. Relative to the fucking application for the fucking determination of public convenience, I find no necessity for more indulgence in the fucking alcohol that can create inability to work, inability to fuck, inability to do what the fuck you're supposed to do as a citizen of the United States of America. And that is to control your fucking drinking habit. Did you know that drinking is a drug? Did you know that drinking can cause you to have a big head with a dot on your face like you, Korean boy?
And you've exhausted your one minute on item number two. Please move on to another item.
Well, I am finished on the alcohol sales and beverages for the off-site consumption.
You've concluded your time on that item. This is your first warning.
All right, Uncle Tom, all right, what number you want me to be on? How about the Olympics on 28, Uncle Tom? Yeah, the Olympics, the Korean Olympics.
Item number 28 is not open for public comment. You've been warned multiple times. This is your last warning. Stick to the items that are open for public comment, or I'm going to move you to general public comment.
Well, Smoking Scan said I should be like an item 34, 35. Let's see, is he right?
Those are fine.
Smoking Scan, those are fine. I got so much fucking time on my mind. Matter of fact, 34, motion by Fat Hernandez and Joardo. Fuck you in CD14, clean up your act. Now until my non-agenda public comment.
One minute.
Prior impermissible restraints means that I cannot say fuck. Prior impermissible restraint means that you, I, and the public behind me can't say fuck you too. But according to Cohen versus California, vulgarity is one man's...
I won't interrupt.
And it is another man's lyric. Now, what do I mean by that? Big hit attorney, bar license 317217. It means that, yes, Baghdadi Zarian versus the United States, Wiki versus California, and the United States Supreme Court under 42 U.S.C. 1983 grants me that privilege as the first motherfucker badass nigger to say fuck you.
Mr. Clerk, please pause this speaker's time. Speaker, you have used the N-word, which is violation of Council Rule 7. This is your only warning, and any use of this word and any of its variations is described in Rule 7. May not be used in this council meeting again by you or any other member, which is to speak. Any future council member or any future council committee meeting, if you violate this rule again, you will forfeit your speaking time and you could be subject to removal pursuant to Council Rules 7 and 12. Mr. Clerk, please, for the record, make a note that Mr. Herman is a habitual violator of this rule and has had several warnings across several meetings, including a handful of dismissals.
Right on.
Good morning. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
General public. So today is the biggest fuck in the ass of everything we've ever seen in life. The KKK Katie Yaroslavsky, John Grant increases in the trash fees. Now, you see, under the law, you can only fucking have fees where it is enough to use the service. But what KKK Katie and the rest of these criminals here in this place did is they triple the trash fees. So starting October the 1st, you're going to get your bill. It ain't gonna say $78. It's gonna say $380, fucking dollars. That's right. And they're raising and raising the motherfucking money because the city's bankrupt because they can't stop fucking talking and not paying attention to public comment, bucket head. So now we get to the Olympics. Da-da-da, da-da-da, da-da-da-da-da-da-da.
Sorry, which item are you speaking to?
You're fucking bankrupt. See, now what you're going to do is you're going to put bonds without a vote of the voters. $130 million a year for the next 30 fucking years. Alone in the interest payments, not including the overrun charges. Because if there's overruns, you have to increase the authorization by Mclay to sell more bonds. Now, if Buckethead over there would have waited till January, the Fed is going to reduce interest rates two more times, it would have saved the city how much, Buckethead? $99.4 million in 10 years. But he don't give a fucking shit. It's not his money.
So you've exhausted your one minute on item 47. Please move on to another item, or you can move on to general public comment.
Now, you get to the liquor license by Bob Lobinblad in honor of Yam Kipur. He takes off his yarmulke and stuffs the cash underneath his little tiny hat. And he says, "I want 5960 Canoga Avenue to sell more liquor so you can beat more bitches." Because you see, you gotta get drunk. You think I got coffee in here, motherfucker? Mm-mm, mm-uh. And so I get a cutting up of this shit. I slap any bitch in front of me, fool. That's right. Why don't I have a TRO? Because when you have a problem with the TRO, contact Jacobian Miles. Jacobian Miles, for all your legal needs.
So it's nothing to do with the agenda items? You have one minute for general public comment.
Now, let's get to that fat little Arlita Parrot bitch over there, Amelda Luisa Padilla, that can't even show up to her own fucking meeting Friday after a goddamn week of vacation. Down 200 fucking feet from her office, we met on Friday. And she drug Marquisie, a known black man, all the way out of South Central to risk his life to drive into Van Nuys, pass all the gangs, just so he could hold a meeting. And you know what happened? He ran his little ass out to his car and he said, "I gotta get out of here. I'm in the ghetto." That's right, fool. So you see, Amelda don't show up to her own goddamn meeting. And then, of course, current price showed up because I had to congratulate him on his 12 felony charges. Let's give him a hand. And then finally, everybody, you have Board of Public Work Commissioner, Mr. Grant. And Mr. Grant will testify to you. Finally, you have a good day, niggas and cunts.
Before the next speaker begins, I would like to call up Fatima Vigam.
I'm sorry, can you hold, sorry, before you roll, Mr. Spindler, this is your first and only formal warning. Do not disrupt this meeting by yelling out. The staff are trying to read out names so we can continue with public comment. If you do it again, you'll be subject to removal. I'm sorry, can you start reading those names over again? Apologies.
Buenos días a todos, señores concejales. Mi nombre es Ana Hernández. Quiero hablar acerca del tema número uno y comentario público.
Okay, so you have...
Permíteme, por favor, tiene un minuto para cada uno de esos.
You have one minute for the item and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Un minuto para el artículo y tiene un minuto para comentario general público si me permite. Good day, members of the council. My name is Ana Hernández and I would like to talk about article number one and also general public comment. Continúe.
Bueno, la razón que yo estoy aquí, yo soy residente de vivienda pública, la más grande que está aquí en Los Ángeles. Y la razón que estamos bastante preocupados, los residentes que ahí habitamos, porque muchas de estos residentes somos personas mayores, personas que están discapacitadas.
Gracias. So the reason I am here is because I am a resident of public housing, one of the largest. And we are here because we are frankly worried. A lot of us are senior citizens, a lot of us are people with disabilities. Continúe.
Y también personas que necesitan aparatos especiales porque están enfermos de los pulmones y todas estas máquinas necesitan de electricidad y otros gastos que se requieren. Entonces, las personas que ahí vivimos, vivimos de un ingreso muy bajo al resto de la población.
Gracias. And not only that, but also people who need devices. People who need devices for breathing, you know, need to be hooked up onto special machines, so we need electricity. And there are other expenses that we need to pay for. And we are people who are very low income compared to the rest of the population. Continúe, por favor.
Este tema es sumamente delicado para todos nosotros porque es algo que es muy esencial para la vida de los residentes.
This is a subject that's very delicate because it's something that's essential for the life of all of these residents. Continúe.
Entonces, este aumento de tarifa del gas es bastante para nosotros, para los ingresos que nosotros tenemos. Tenemos que pagar la basura, tenemos que pagar aseguranza, si hay alguna otra cosa que se tiene que darle mantenimiento.
And so this increase on gas is too much for us. We have other things to pay for. We have to pay for trash, we have to pay for insurance, just in case there's anything that needs to be maintained. Continúe, por favor.
El salario y los gastos no van de acuerdo a este aumento de basura y de electricidad.
What we make, you know, it doesn't match our expenses or this increase in electricity and waste management. Continúe.
Entonces ustedes, yo personalmente les pido y a nombre de los residentes de vivienda pública que por favor tomen el asunto en sus manos y que puedan llegar a un acuerdo para no aumento de estas tarifas.
So I ask personally, and I ask on behalf of the residents of public housing, for you guys to come up to a resolution to put a stop to this increases. Thank you.
Okay, but Mr. President, I just want to let you know, like, I have a hard time and Mr. Attorney focusing on what to speak on with the agenda items because Mr. Lee owes me an apology and he still hasn't done it.
So I'm going to ask that you, you can speak to that during general, but for the first two minutes...
Okay, well, I just want to say, you know, so if I get off topic, Smoking Scan understands, but that's the reason why.
Okay, please, understood. Please stay on topic for the next two minutes, 37 seconds.
We'll try to get on topic here. Okay, so first of all, I do want to say anything that Mr. Lee is proposing in these open, available things, I'm going to say vote no because he owes me an apology. So, Mr. President, until he gives me that apology, vote no on all his items, please. Now, the one, on a serious note, the one where you want to put the lights out for human trafficking and child trafficking, I 100% support that. But I'm here to remind you that there's all different kinds of trafficking. There's sex trafficking, there's labor trafficking. And I'm here to mention that the labor trafficking happens, allegedly, I'll say that just for legal, you know, clarification, by Scientology, okay? Trafficking children from all different parts of the world, okay? And bringing them here, and then they end up in labor situations and they end up, many victims have come forward saying that they were trafficked and they had to do hard labor, and then they were also sexually assaulted because of the lack of protection. So when you are lighting City Hall for the victims of human trafficking, can you please remember that it's still going on under your nose because this has not stopped? There is still human trafficking going on and there's still people coming forward about it. And just remember that. I guess I can't talk about all the firefighter stuff because I'm like, yeah, about time you guys are putting in for the firefighters because, you know, we should have done this before the big fire, but I know that's off topic. So, like I said, I'm a little distracted. Smoking Scan gets it because Mr. Lee owes me an apology. Okay, let's go to the one where, number, where you're trying to hire an expert. I think that's number two. And yes, you guys need expert advice up in here. You need... Isn't that the one?
That's items three or five, which are not open for public comment. Item number two is an alcohol...
Man, you closed a lot on us, okay?
An application for determination of public convenience or necessity.
I told you I'm off. Okay, so one and two, okay? We'll figure it out. We'll get there. Smoking Scan will be patient with me. Hopefully you will too. Anyway, okay, number one, no, you should not be raising any fees on anyone. Not the ambulance fees, not this fees, not any fees. Why do the people get punished for your ineptitude to, hey, how about listening to the CIO? Mr. Zabo sits here all the time saying, "No, we don't have the money for this. We don't have the money for that." Do you guys listen? Nope. So we have to pay for it. Why?
General public comment?
Public comment. Again, shout out to Smoking Scan. Thank you for, I love that he's there here, that Smoking Scan's here, is watching all this nonsense. Mr. Lee, you still owe me an apology. We're not forgetting you being on vacation for a week. I did not forget. Mr. President, you're not listening. And see, you're setting a bad example, sir. You're setting a bad, you owe me an apology now again. Mr. President, come on.
So can we pause your time?
You were leading a good example.
So, members of the public...
Is that an apology?
Hold on, your speaker, your time is paused.
Okay, all right.
Hold on, speaker, your time is paused. Members of the public, please do not disrupt other people's public comment, period. If you have, if you want to clap, if you want to boo, please hold that until after the public speaker is finished. I'm sorry. We paused your time. Go ahead.
Thank you. Okay, so bang in the gavel, so Mr. Lee has to do the right thing. All right, I'm here to talk about the Faith and Blue event coming on October 11th this year, okay? LAPD is joining forces, and I get it, it's a national event. I don't have a problem with the event itself. But you guys are doing it with Scientology this year and Hollywood Division. How many times, I've been here for a year telling you about what's going on and why you should not be in bed with Scientology anymore. So I don't understand why that's going on, especially since victims want to feel safe to come forward. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Julian Zuniga. I'm a RCTO with the City of L.A. I'm here to express my support for the proposed rate increase. I'm a shop steward representing the workers in sanitation. And I know that these increases are to support not just residential collections, but the full suite of programs, such as the multifamily bulky item pickup, the Christmas tree recycling, the move-in, move-out support, and other work that sanitation workers do. This is, this is an important and necessary raise. Thank you.
My name is Lorna Paisley. I live in Lake Balboa. I think the increases on pickup is too high, $20 extra in a month. And then by the 2029, it'll almost be double. Food's going up every day, insurance goes up, healthcare goes up, everything goes up. And then I was on one of the Zoom meetings and they said, "What would be the consequence of not passing the bill?" And somebody said, "Well, then you probably would lose your street cleaning." Well, guess what? I've been here 12 years and I've seen one street sweeper go by my house, so I don't care. I'll keep cleaning my streets for not having a big increase in pickup. And I think you need to find better ways to help people recycle. I belong to something called Ridwell, and I recycle a lot of goods... And somebody said, "Well, then you probably would lose your street cleaning." Well, guess what? I've been here twelve years, and I've seen one street sweeper go by my house, so I don't care. I'll keep cleaning my streets for not having a big increase in pickup. And I think you need to find better ways to help people recycle. I belong to something called Ridwell, and I recycle a lot of goods through them, so it doesn't go into the garbage can, and you should be able to find something too. Be innovative, be creative, find some other way to lower the garbage. And I also am a little skeptical about the price increase, because I saw what they did with the homeless money.
Next speaker.
Thank you, and good morning, council. My name is Julian Markwitz. I'm here today to ask for your assistance and to raise serious concerns about my landlord Grub Properties and their management firm, Avenue Five Property Management. I'd like to commend my council member, Councilmember Soto Martinez, as his office was the first to respond to a series of letters I wrote to various public officials on this subject. His office dispatched a young staffer, Nicholas, to my building earlier this month. I'm the tenants' association chairman in my building, and my neighbors and I have experienced endless issues. On September nineteenth, the Los Angeles Department of Housing cited my building for three different violations. Since I started my tenants' association, I've been the object of threats and retaliation for my landlord. Of course, I can't share the details of our situation in this forum, but I humbly ask that you take my remarks to heart and follow up with me on this matter. Thank you.
My name is Marybo Gonzalez. I'm asking for Mr. Marquis's attention, please.
Good morning. So which item would you like to speak to?
I have asked you many times, I have presented myself in your office.
Speaker, all right, one minute for general public comment.
Constituent office, and you do not accept your constituents? You don't have public hearing meetings, but yet you want to raise trash? My, my street smells like pee because you take your money to the West Side of Los Angeles, and was, it's like shit. What do you do for our community? Just talk, all of you guys. All you have done is just talk amongst yourselves. You're not hearing the public. Why are you here? Why do you take office? I visited your office, I emailed you, I spoken to your people, and you are nowhere to be found. More or less, you don't even respond to my issues that I have. No unlifting utilities, trash. It is still, you want to raise trash three times as much? I am talking to you, sir. We pay you. We pay you. We pay all of you. Taxes, you do want to charge on time? Then you have to provide services on time. Homeless.
Speaker, your time has expired. We have to move on to the next speaker. And before, before we do, we've been very patient, but the woman on the left-hand side of the council chambers near the pillar who is holding up the sign, please do not, yes, please do not disrupt the public comment. This is your first and only formal warning. Same with the gentleman who's standing next to you in the black jacket and the black thick-rimmed glasses. Please do not disrupt other people's public comment.
I am here to express my support for the proposed rate increase. As a proud worker for the City of Los Angeles Sanitation Department, I know these fees cover more than just trash. They also pay for services like unlimited bulky pickup, Christmas tree collection, and safe centers for disposal, waste.
I believe there's only one way to solve persistent problems with the police in this city and elsewhere, and that is to have investigators from the National Guard look into police misconduct. There are basic nuts and bolts reasons why this is true. Fortunately for us, it costs residents nothing for our representatives to ask the governor for this highest level of police oversight. Unfortunately, though, the city council won't do it, and they won't explain why. If anyone else thinks we're entitled to this highest level of police oversight, please say so. Whether it's obvious or not, police are being threatened and, excuse me, people are being threatened and worse. And if anyone thinks I'm getting something wrong, please go to my Twitter and educate me, and that's for anyone here or anyone on Smoke and Scan or whatever. It's at M-A-C-K-E-R-M-two. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, thank you. I realize our city, state, and country face larger issues than trash increases. However, before the city considers raising rates for the same level of trash and recycling services, I'd like to suggest exploring an additional recycling option that could improve outcomes for Los Angeles residents. It's widely held perception that much of what goes in the blue bins ultimately ends up in landfills. This perception erodes public trust in our system and makes future increased rates harder to justify. I'm asking, instead of asking Angelenos to pay more for the same service, I urge the city council to partner with the company Terracycle, T-E-R-R-A-C-Y-C-L-E dot com. Terracycle specializes in truly hard-to-recycle materials and already partners with municipalities and corporations across the country. By exploring a partnership, Los Angeles could demonstrate leadership. Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, that concludes public comment for this morning's meeting. We've exhausted our time for public comment. It's eleven oh five. All right, this gentleman in the black glasses and black t-shirt, I believe Mr. Groat, he's been warned.
Yes, Mr. President.
If not, this is your first warning.
So, Mr. President, he is, he has been warned and is eligible for removal.
All right, he's ordered removes pursuant to Rule Seven and Rule Twelve.
So, Speaker, you have been, public comment has been closed. You were previously warned for disrupting another speaker. You have now been ordered removed from this council chamber for disrupting the proceedings.
Councilmember Hurdado.
Thank you, Council President.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ms. Hurdado. Sir, you've been removed pursuant to the council rules. Madam in the black tank top, you've been warned. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, so, Mr. President, the woman in the black tank top has also been warned and is eligible for removal for continuing to disrupt this meeting.
Take my fucking mic away. Take my mic. Just take my mic, that's what you want to do. Take my mic away. Take my, 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 take